Welcome, I'm Tim Skoggins, Chair of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, September 18th, 2017. Does any -- Anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No. We have minutes from our special meeting on October 31st. Is there a motion to approve the minutes that were circulated?
Yes.
So moved. Moved by Tony, seconded by Art. Any additions or corrections to the minutes for August 30th, 31st?
Yeah, Jason, it's not Jason Lloyd, it's Jason Lilly.
Jason Lilly?
Right.
Oh, there in PDF, okay. You got that? Okay. Any others? Okay, everyone in favor of approving the minutes for August 31st as corrected, say aye.
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 I gotta, I have to abstain.
Okay. So Art abstained, we have four ayes, so that motion passes 4-0-1. Warrants. First I have check warrant number eight in the amount of $67,698.14.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Items over $1,000. $3,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $2,000 to Bennington County Sheriff, $1,100 to Bennington Tire Corporation.
The Dodge needed a new tire.
$1,200 to Business Card Services.
Stamped envelopes for the tax bills.
$2,100 to I-3 Imaging Company?
Cemetery Fund for, they had new signs made for all the cemeteries.
$2,400 to MSK Engineering?
That's the garage.
The design on the garage. Yep, we've had meetings with that, relative to that. $6,900 to TAM, $3,100 to TAM. $11,000 to US Bank?
That's the first bond payment, that's the interest-only bond payment for the garage.
For the garage.
They didn't wait till it was up, did they?
Nope. We haven't, we haven't bought an ale yet.
$1,300 to VLCT Employment Resources?
That's the fourth quarter unemployment.
Unemployment insurance?
Mm-hmm.
$6,000 to wholesale distributors?
That's culverts.
And another $5,200 to this wholesale distributors?
Which is road fabric.
Fabric. And $3,000, $10,000, $1,000 to William E. Daley.
And that's all different materials for the road driver.
Any more discussion on check warrant number eight? All in favor of approving check warrant number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So check warrant number eight in the amount of $67,698.14 is approved, 5-0-3.
Dave, can you start, can you make payments like to the architects and that sort of stuff out of that bond?
Oh yes, we already are, the MSK came, not out of the bond because we don't need that money right now. We don't have any major bills coming up, it's all goldstone of MSK at this point. But as soon as we have need for a major part of it, we can start drawing down. All the money is sitting in US Bank, waiting to be drawn down. We have to have bills to show them before they, that's all immediate transfer.
Alright, we have check warrant number seven in the amount of $1,048.34. That's a single payment to Kevin O'Toole for the tax sale business. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that check warrant number seven in the amount of $1,048.34 is approved, 5-0-0. And I have payroll warrant number five in the amount of $18,162.28.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Check warrant, payroll warrant number five in the amount of $18,162.28 is approved, 5-0-0. Alright, are there any announcements? One announcement I made note of is we received notice this week that there is a bill that has been introduced into the Senate. A very vague bill that would require something called primary police coverage of every town in the state. We don't know what that means yet, apparently the point of the bill is to get people stirred up and call meetings. And so, the first meeting in this area is on September 26th, 9:00 AM to 11:30 at Manchester Community Library on Cemetery Street. I'll be there, Art will be there, recommend citizens plug into this as well. We don't know what this is about, we don't know if they're going to require every town of arbitrary size to have a police force, if they're going to allow us to contract as we currently do with the sheriff, and that will satisfy our requirement under the bill, or if the bill is entirely serious for that matter. What I've read about it online and BT Digger and such is that the point of the bill is that certain lawmakers, lawmakers believe that some towns are taking a free ride on police coverage by virtue of the fact, like Shasberry doesn't take advantage of, the fact that we have a sheriff's barracks in town. We still contract with the sheriff for what we hope would qualify as primary police coverage, but apparently some towns don't do anything in the way of policing and just depend on the state troopers for everything from murder to fender benders. And apparently the concern is that that's not an equitable distribution of the state money that goes toward the troopers, and it's not what the state troopers were meant to be doing. So I expect there'll be a lot of, a lot of interest in this bill going forward.
So they're more concerned about them being just, being brought up to more high importance, high risk?
It's the, as I understand it, it's what the troopers are being asked to do and who's paying for what they're doing. They're not meant to be the local police in the town where they happen to have a barracks.
Tim?
Mm-hmm.
We have a sheriff's unit here in Shasberry?
We contract with the sheriff?
Oh, okay.
For patrol, yes.
You missed one, you said, you said a sheriff's barracks, what you meant to say was a police barracks.
I did misspeak, yes, thank you, yeah.
That's what I was wondering, you know.
Okay, okay.
I was wondering too, so.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't have a sheriff's barracks here, we have a state police barracks here. One other, go ahead.
Well, I thought you were moving on, I have a point of order, I just, I just noticed, realized that I dropped off a public comments on this.
Oh, okay.
So it needs to be plugged in here.
I will introduce that next, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to introduce a personal note. My neighbor and the resident historian of Shasberry, Ruth Levin, passed away recently. And she's a lady we like to say literally wrote the book on Shasberry. The book is called Ordinary Heroes, you probably know about it. It documents the history of Shasberry, written in the 70s by Ruth Levin and Tyler Ress. And she was a wealth of knowledge, not just in what she wrote down, but every time I spoke to her, I'll learn something. And she will be missed. Alright, public comments?
Yes, I've got some.
Off it.
Art and Tim would be interested in this one.
I'm handing it down through for it.
Okay. You want to stick together. That's where there was a problem with you people trying to find me.
We had a hard time.
Yeah, I know, Aaron was really upset about it.
We've been waiting for a while and driving around for a while and...
Well, I was standing up there at the gate waiting for you guys, and I thought, well, wait a minute, maybe they're waiting for me, so I blew the horn. Nothing happened, so I backed all the way down. Because I didn't want to turn around and then drive down where you guys are driving up. So I backed all the way down. And then the mailman went up through and he came back and goes, "Are you waiting for some people with a gator?" I said, "Yeah." "You seen him?"
"Yeah."
"They're down below."
Mm-hmm. For the people who don't know this conversation, we had a property inspection out at Bob's place when he appealed his, reached his tax evaluation. And we had a little, little trouble finding his, his property when we drove out there, out there to look at it.
So, I'm not sure who comes up with those addresses. But that is definitely, to me, it shouldn't have been that address from Shasberry Hollow.
Well, you mean, you think your address should have, be different, or that the, our telephones are putting it in the wrong place?
Well, somebody put it in to the CAI Technologies people there?
Mm-hmm.
Because it shows up on that report, when you go for the property report. It shows it at 1795 Shasberry Hollow Road.
But our, but our government stopped us way back at 21, 23.
Right. So that shouldn't be addressed to 1795, I don't think, it should be whatever. They used to call that road Sleepy Hollow, but the sign's missing now, so I don't know.
I don't know who did that, was it federal government?
No, we will take that up with the 911 board. All these are signed based on a formula. Bob and I talked about it a little bit before the meeting, I don't know the origin or how long that address has been there, but we'll look at it tomorrow, we shall.
There's nothing we can do.
No, it's all through the 911 board, we'll check the measurements and if we, if we have a change, Bob will let you know.
Because I brought this up to Larry Johnson, and I didn't know what I was talking about.
It's not a listener issue, the 911 board is separate. I can see what you're saying, 1795, well after 2100, it just doesn't make sense.
I even offered the guy to buy the property, for the simple reason, I fell down, I can't get up, can you guys come now?
Yeah.
You might be able to help us here, Forrest, this is kind of an unusual situation and, well, not that unusual for around here, but this property, which has an address that doesn't fit the increasing number pattern, is there's no house on the property, there's no residence on the property, and it's not actually on the road. So is that?
Just like a landlocked piece of?
Yeah.
There's a woods road that goes past, and there's a driveway that goes up there?
Yep.
To the camp that's up there.
Gotcha.
Because I could see you frowning like, yeah, if I got called out on this 911 call, I wouldn't have been able to go.
And we would use what Dave was mentioning, we'd use the 911 as the most up-to-date and accurate. But I'd have to pull that up to see what, what it would say. But that's, that's super concerning though.
Because the other camp's up there, and it has a zero Shasberry Hollow Road.
Zero?
Zero. Yeah, location, now this is my property.
1795.
Zero Shasberry Hollow Road. And there's another property here, it used to be Frank Madurski's. And the address on that one, location zero, Shasberry Hollow Road. So... Especially if somebody was hunting and got hurt and you guys had to show up. Next I have... And this was in that meeting where they kept saying that I had an agreement with the state. If you go to the last page, the property tax hearing officer says, "I therefore find the town's valuation of $77,700 to be correct." So there was no agreement between me and the state. It was, we agreed with the town on the value of the property. Here's some photos of that camp at 1795, there's different photos. Because I've been in an argument with Larry Johnson, I told him it exists, he told me it didn't. So I said, "Well, if it burns down, you can't charge anybody with arson because the building don't exist." He wanted to know what I was going to do, and I told him, "I'm not doing anything." So whoever went up there to go and check on the property, didn't check the property. Because there's a nice one, as you saw it, a nice gravel road going up through, goes right up around to the camp up there. And I think the reason it was never put into the lister's hands was the guy that owned it previously built it with no documentation. I think that's what happened. So that's helping that. And... Little bunch of stuff here. I didn't, I didn't. Here's itemized property cost for Madurski's property. And you look down in the notes, it says it's rural residential 80, enforcement recreation. That was changed back in 2002, the last inspection was 2008. And this is the same with my property. Because in 2002, they changed it all to forest and recreation. Also on there, down in the notes, it's got Spike Horn Camp, and then it's got Ace Travel Trailer. It sounds like there's a camp there, and there's a travel trailer. The travel trailer was called Spike Horn Camp. And it's not on my property. Now, on Madurski's property, it shows an 8x20 camper, there's never been a camper on that property. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Take the bottom.
No problem. Hold. That is on the old road that goes from Shasberry Hollow over into Black Hollow. That's where the, apparently the stagecoach went across the rocks there and wore it down. This is hard to see because you're at an angle.
Yeah.
Still tracks there, is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, yeah, the tracks are there where it went through. There's one bad spot just prior to that location, then after that, it's fairly good going.
You see, you can still see the tracks of the Oregon Trail.
And this is?
The old Stagecoach Road.
Stagecoach tracks?
Yeah. When you go up Shasberry Hollow Road, way up towards the end, the road makes a turn to the right, it's where Kearns' property is, and across the road from the house, the National Forest put posted to keep people from driving up through there. But you go around like where the road split. Remember when I stopped and had to open the gate? Well, if you went up, you come out and you look back, there's a nice wide road down through there. So, but it's too late now to call it Stagecoach Road. Because it's all been, the date of that's all been changed. I think the cut off date is, what, 2014, I think, something like that. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'm actually Ryan Murphy, I'm a Shasberry resident. I bought Bill Finnerbaker's house, if you guys know him, up on North Maple Hill Road, but I'm a member of the Board of BRS.
Okay.
So I'm here to help answer any questions, make you guys know, I'm CFO at the Bennington College.
Oh, okay. David Reese?
Yeah.
Been doing a lot of meetings with him on economic development in the area?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, next up, item six, Treasurers Report. Melanie? You probably sent that out late today, right?
Yeah, there were three.
Must be Dropbox.
Well, the main thing I wanted to talk about while you're looking for that anyway, is that tax bills are out. If you haven't gotten yours, please contact me, call or email or drop by. They should, I've already taken in a couple hundred thousand dollars, so I know that they're, they're out there. So people should definitely get in touch with me if they have not received them yet. I'm not going to be up in the office tomorrow, this is not going to go out live, but anyway, tomorrow, Tuesday, I will not be in the office past 11:00, and I won't be there at all on Wednesday. But Thursday and Friday, my hours are as usual, 10 to 1:00. And we've got two boxes, you can drop your payments off, but I'm the only one with a key to, so it's very, very secure in my absence. So, okay, want to talk about money now? I, we didn't have a, could you show the one that was, that's got August 31st at the top?
The previous one?
The third two, yeah.
Yes.
Is it there?
It's in the same group?
Yeah, what?
And they all came out.
Oh, okay, so maybe that's a three thing?
You should be able to scroll from the one.
Yeah, so maybe that same, that same.
It was all one.
Oh, I see, I see, yes.
Yeah. Right, okay, so that's, because we didn't have this at the last meeting, so I just wanted to run through it real fast. You see that in August, we probably already talked about this, but I did do a draw on the line of credit, but that's probably the last one I'll have to do because the tax money is coming in pretty briskly now. So that, that's the last you'll see of that. I don't think there's anything else all that interesting going on here, that's the last sidewalk grant, I think, that... Yeah, you can scroll down if you like. And you just see that, those are all the warrants that you approved. So, down at the bottom, we're very similar to last year, you can see comparing fiscal year '18 revenues and expenditures versus last year. Revenue's a little bit higher, expenditures are a little bit lower, but that's practically rounding error. So it's following a very similar pattern to last year. Okay, so if you want to go back to that one that you had before, that's showing this month. You can see, it says taxes received, about half an hour after completing the spreadsheet, I got another $90,000 in there, so.
Okay.
It's coming in very nicely. And as you can see, no more draws on the line of credit, and we've got, if you scroll down, you can see where our cash position is right now, we're well over $308,000, so we're not going to need any more draws. So that's just mid-month, I didn't show you, I didn't extend it to the, to compare it to budget because it's mid-month and it doesn't really tell you that much. That last one is just the reserve accounts, that's just to see where the money is coming and going. That $38,000 that stands out there is a truck payment that I, what was that, the deal with that, Dave? It was, we had to transfer it from one place to another. Yeah.
We had the second one being put in.
Into the reserve account.
Into the reserve.
It belonged to them. Yeah, there's nothing, most of the rest of that's water money, nothing terribly interesting there, but I'll just show it to you. Look to look at it next month. That's all I got.
Everything's turning along like we expected to?
Yeah, it's a really busy time of year. Oh, maybe we talked about the auditors were here last week?
Yes.
Which was, took 95% of my attention most of the time. We seem to have weathered it pretty well. They're going to come back one more time, and then they'll have lots of follow-up stuff. But we can kind of anticipate what they're looking for now, so it goes, I think, it's easier every year with certain exceptions because of some things that are new, like they're going to want to know about the bond and, and the fixed assets thing is an ongoing project for Dave, but I think it went pretty well.
Good.
Any questions?
Tim, you may want to emphasize the fact that it's not, the responsibility of paying your taxes falls upon the taxpayers. They don't, if they don't receive a bill, it's not our responsibility.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you, I meant to make that clear. That's, every day in the mail, I get a few undeliverables. And, you know, if, if our system has the wrong address for you, it's really your responsibility to make sure that we have it. And that's why I wanted, I cannot emphasize enough, if you have not received it, contact me. I can email it, I can fax it, I can mail it, I can hand it to you in person, but it's really your responsibility to make sure. Thanks, Art.
Do we have something to that effect on the website?
No, we can.
Let's put that up, yeah.
Yeah, I can write some.
Tim?
Yes.
Do what you're doing, then I'll...
Did we just sign on the credit card option?
Yeah, it's, it slipped by another year. Marlene and I want to get our heads together, I think maybe as soon as the tax business is out of the way. There's still some wrinkles we're working out with Marlene's payment system, so that's maybe a January project at this point. It's, I've gotten already two calls this year, people wishing they could pay with a credit card. The demand is absolutely there.
Yeah.
Bob?
I went on Shasberry's website, and I was looking for the address because I had a letter to mail to the town clerk. And I went to More Information, and I went there, and it's got the address as 61 Buck Hill Road. I thought you people used a P.O. box.
It's both. Usually on the, I know on the homepage, it's listed as both. I think either one will work.
No, it has to be P.O. Box 409.
Really?
Yes, they won't deliver it to 61 Buck Hill Road.
They've been more willing to...
Put it in the box.
Yeah. Recently.
Yeah, okay, here at the bottom is where it has it both ways.
But yeah, the mailing address is definitely.
They will not deliver it if it goes to 61 Buck Hill Road?
No, they won't.
Well, officially.
With huge delays, I've had things delayed because P.O. Box 409.
Sometimes it has to go back.
Sometimes they catch it and just put it in.
Okay, well, we need to make that clear on the website too then, because I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
Well, it is right on contacting us, it's right there, P.O. Box 409.
And we should just have physical address and mailing address.
Yeah.
Because if you go to the website there for the town clerk, it's got the hours and the times. The day. The dates rather, the times. Drop down, it says More Information, or More Info. Click onto that and you can email to the town clerk or you mail. And it has Town Clerk, sixty-one Buckhill Road.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, this is it. We'll just change those. We'll have to get everybody to look at their sites and make sure they have P.O. Box 409.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, uh, that's good to know. We're in the process of redesigning our website, so we'll, we'll get those details fixed right away. But that's something that'll be good to get right when we get a new one out. Thank you.
What's that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Road Foreman Report.
Well, uh, I'm expecting Steve to be here, so, uh, let me gather some thoughts. And maybe we'll let our guest go first and then I'll have something to talk about for roads. I wasn't prepared to talk on.
Forrest is ready. He is here to talk to us about, uh, what's been going on at Bennington Rescue for the last six months.
Absolutely. You keep driving or we drive it?
If you want to drive, you probably, yeah.
It'll go smoother.
Thank you all for allowing us to come and give you a quick update. I'm sorry, our schedules have, uh, we've all been crazy and traveling and, uh, trying to get caught up. So, uh, one thing I'll add on, on your citizens, I forgot, I didn't catch the gentleman's name. But if anybody else, if anyone else knows of addressing issues, please let David or myself. And, you know, we want to work with the fire department and police and us and make sure that if there are any addressing problems for any emergency services, that's a huge concern. We want to fix those or at least get them in queue to get fixed. Because that's, we don't know where to go, that's, it's lots of time, but. All right, so I'll try to be quick. I know you guys got a long agenda. Uh, so, uh, last year after we came and we chatted and we appreciate your guys' support, one thing I promised is to try to come back once or twice a year, uh, give you a quick update, answer questions, I believe. It's probably been almost a month or six weeks now. Tony came back with some questions that you guys had submitted in a meeting. I tried to include those in. Uh, we also got some questions from the Bennington ones, so I put them all in here because I figure if one town's asking them, probably both towns are. Uh, so, real quick, remember, just to remind you, uh, we are the only critical care licensed service in southwest Vermont. And as you guys saw in the banner in, uh, in May, uh, we were, uh, the first EMS agency awarded the Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award for our cardiac care. So that is, uh, super excited for our staff to be able to achieve that. That's a dedication to customer service and to, uh, our quality care and getting you, if you're having chest pain or a cardiac event, getting you to where you need to be, which is a cath lab quickly, allows us to, to get and maintain that. And I'm super excited that rural Bennington was able to be the first agency in Vermont to achieve that gold level. Uh, so, oh. Tony, there were any formatting problems?
Well, maybe I didn't know what it was supposed to look like.
Well, so, uh, our response is the green, which I don't have the numbers in front of me, I'm sorry. Is, uh, uh, the number of nine-one-one responses. The yellow, which I, I remember that as far as the end was about two hundred of those calls, uh, was our mutual aid to our out-of-town assisting other agencies. And then that blue part is our, our transfer portion. And I apologize, there's some.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I pulled that up quickly and I thought, yeah, it's displaying, but I wasn't reading it, so.
Oh, that's okay. Sorry about that.
I should have realized category name was not what was going.
Okay, so, uh, the green is?
Yes.
Calls that you claim you don't get.
No, 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 green is, this is just dividing out our actual, um, the types of service. So green is nine-one-one calls. Blue is our, our transfer business.
Okay.
So the, and then yellow is when other towns call us.
So, so then the nine-one-one calls are further broken down?
Yes.
Okay.
So then out of, and then, and then this is the breaking down of the green part.
Yeah.
Of the calls that we get, sixty-four percent of those are medical, twenty-six are trauma. Eight percent, we don't know what happens at time of dispatch. It's an unknown problem and an issue. And then, of course, we always do certain standby, especially events like Garlic Fest or Big Truck Night, all those types of things. The, the one thing I forgot to mention on the previous slide was, uh, that our numbers are down slightly from 2016. And some of that is, uh, we are working, um, we're working with some Blueprint for Health and some other folks in the Bennington area, uh, trying to identify high utilizers. Those people that are calling nine-one-one all the time, not utilizing, or calling nine-one-one as sort of their entry into the healthcare, healthcare system. Not realizing that an ambulance isn't necessarily what you need for toe pain four times a week or whatever the illness or ailment is. So far, that's been good. So what that does for us is, if you guys remember, we only get paid when we take somebody to the hospital. So if we, if all we do is we come to your house and say, you don't need to go to the hospital, or work with the patient until you don't need to go to the hospital, that is fantastic. Except there's not a reimbursable stream for that. So it's the right thing for the patient, it's the right thing to do. Uh, but that's the reason that some of our numbers have, uh, or the, our total volume went down a little bit this past year. So, the hospital's benefiting, um, health insurance companies are benefiting, the patient is benefiting, but we're still carrying a load that works right now.
But you're doing things like managing people with diabetes. Uh, you know, they usually get a call for low blood sugar and so now that's all being done as part of that.
Pre-hospital, you're not, not necessarily going, um, to, uh, to the actual hospital. Uh, so on the first line, I'm like, you're caught up. Uh, we live, uh...
If it helps, you could try to plug in yours and see if you can display it from there.
And you see there's a lot of those calls that when you go and they really don't need hospital care.
It's, um...
At that point, you're not paid for that time.
Correct. There's, it's a lot more than you think. A lot of folks, uh, you know, we want to be a resource.
So if you want to discourage people, could you maybe charge them with a group physician pay?
Well, we'll talk about that here in a minute, but it's, uh, typically what ends up happening in that, uh...
Call off fee?
Uh, in that realm is the folks that we would potentially be going to in those scenarios aren't the folks that are going to have the funds to pay. So it's usually the ones that are already on Medicaid or some other payment system that don't... We could send the bills ten times a, ten times a week and everybody get thrown in the trash or, or not even opened at all. So it's, what, what is, what's bad for us is I don't have recourse. Because if I sent you ten bills in a row and you don't pay them, but you call me tomorrow, work will come. You know, but then on our side, we have to put your, we would have to put that entire thing into a billing process. So it adds on the expense side with, uh, not necessarily adding on the, on the revenue side. Uh, there's also a huge public, uh, there are some towns that have done that. Back when we did this thing last fall that actually dug into like a response fee. And the, the amount of negative publicity from that is very, it's pretty large. So it's, uh, you know, they call, we get to come and get you out of bed and all of a sudden they get a X hundred dollar bill for getting out of bed. Now, it could be the right way to go, if that's what Shastberry wants us to do. We, you know, that's, we absolutely can talk about that.
Internally, the board discussed it and felt that it's not in keeping with the traditions of Bennington Rescue Squad.
Right.
Because it had, it's not ambulance service that they review as a rescue squad. And there is obviously some money there from endowed, the town contributed, right, over the years. So some of that goes with the territory for being a rescue squad. And we thought, given that you're not talking a lot of money.
So they solve the stigma that it's a rescue squad.
Right, right. And the town donated money for that. So we kind of felt that the better model, and once you start a fee, you're going to start discouraging people from calling when they really do have a medical emergency. So the board felt it was better to continue the tradition, which is what most people do. Very few people charge any fees if they just show up and no one's transported. Am I not right on that? For that reason.
Now, you guys can see the actual numbers this time. Uh, the, our nine-one-one call was over thirty-six hundred. Uh, I was already going with two hundred and only did about eighteen hundred for the transfer.
Well, it's about thirty-six sixty. How many were that, did you transport?
Uh, about eighty percent.
About eighty percent.
Yes, is that, that's, that's about right on where our number is. So, where is the, where is that discrepancy? So for nine-one-one calls, I apologize, eighty percent's our norm. That was last year. Uh, this is, I'm sorry, this is 2016 data. Uh, last year when I reported all to you guys, I was giving fifteen data and this is sixteen data. The number is about twenty-nine percent. And what I can tell you is that Shastberry is, you guys are really high. Uh, you guys are hovering right around about forty-eight, fifty percent of the time that we come to Shastberry, we don't actually take someone to the hospital. So, uh, that is just a, an outlier. I think there's some, there's some folks up here that have a high need and that's okay, that's part of it. But, uh, your guys' number was, was really high. Uh, Bennington in comparison is running about twenty-six percent as far as their non-transport, or their non-transport percentage. Uh, keep in mind that all those ones, all that red is all stuff that's not necessarily, is not a reimbursable, uh, service. Uh, I might talk about that. So what have we done over the last year? So a few things that, that we've done, because we're, we're obviously trying to take care of our own problem. We have, uh, our staffing now is at minimal levels. So we are right at the, the razor's edge of, based on the demand curve of when ambulances needed throughout the day. And, you know, based on historical data and last six months' data, and then we also use ninety-day data. Um, our schedules are adjusted every month. And, uh, the times we start and take, we hit, we put ambulances on shift and take ambulances off shift vary by the time of day and day of week based on our data. So we, we are, you know, I can tell you now Tuesdays are the lowest volume day. It's, it's very odd. But then, uh, controversially, Wednesday, about 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, the, it spikes. And it's a, it's, it's really hard to sort of manage. So it's a, even though it is nine-one-one business, there is some data in there. But basically, we have, we've, we've, uh, we've cut our staffing to the minimal levels that, that we can afford without jeopardizing service. The hospital uses a rotation system to give out some of those transfers. We don't staff any extra on those days. So those are days that, um, historically, we would have an extra crew on those, that's not there anymore. Which I think is a disservice to a lot of folks, and we'll talk about that later. But that is, uh, because of that sort of system up there, we're not, we're not staffing for stuff that we, we know we're not going to get. Uh, we've obviously done all the insurance shopping. Uh, last year, we, we were able to put our insurance out the market. We significantly reduced our workers' comp expense, uh, both with, uh, a proactive injury prevention program and, uh, putting it back out to market. We've, uh, we've cut benefits for staff. We don't, we no longer have downline vision for folks. Uh, so that went away last year, just trying to, trying to get our budget back in line. Which also hurts on the other side because it's hard to get people to, you know, as you start cutting benefits, it's hard to try to recruit folks to come to work for you. And, uh, we're always, you know, re-con, renegotiating our contracts with our vendors, trying to, trying to get our best cost, trying to level things out, trying not to have huge spikes in expenses like you guys do. Try to level things out over an extended period of time. On the, on the revenue side, um, our, we have, uh, reinvigorated our billing staff to go after difficult, liquid accounts. We have a denial and appeal. The, in insurance billing, the, the stuff that is supposed to come in and go out the door, that's the easy stuff. But if you guys have all, I'm sure all of you probably have a story of yourself or a family member that has got something denied or you've had to go through four steps in the approval process to get something, to get an MRI approved or whatever else. On the, on the healthcare side, it's the same, or on the EMS side, it's the same way. As soon as, you know, John Smith with a birthday of twelve twenty-one, you know, sixty-five, and his birthday happens to be twelve, twelve of sixty-five, we, we just transpose the number. Uh, and that's an easy one. That kid's kicked out of the system. And, uh, where a lot of the time on the billing side is making sure that, one, the errors are minimal going in. And then insurers now are very, very quick to deny and, and to reject a lot of things. So you have to, you have to submit additional documentation and, and every insurer is different. And that's where, um, where our billing services are a little more efficient than, uh, sort of contracting out. We chase after all of that. We, you know, we, we go after every dime that we possibly can. Uh, we establish processes for estates, deceased patients, uh, with a collection process. One of the things that, uh, we started last year and it's really kind of taken off is we're providing other, our billing office does a phenomenal job. It's where we're actually now providing that service for other EMS agencies. So, uh, that is another revenue stream for us, allows us to be really, really good at billing. But then, that's additional, uh, income for us. Now, we're not necessarily making a ton of money, but, you know, everything in the green bucket helps versus in the expense bucket. Uh, we, uh, obviously do our annual fundraising. Uh, we had Rescue Fest this year, uh, which those of you guys that has that donated or had businesses that donated, thank you, or came out. Uh, we're always going after grants and donations. Uh, that's, uh, one going thing that always happens with us. And you guys have probably seen, uh, uh, we've really increased the amount of CPR and EMS education classes that we're doing, once again, as a revenue stream. One, CPR education and getting that education out in the community is absolutely paramount. And then, um, on the flip side of that, that's another revenue stream for us, trying to, trying to solve that, that, uh, that income problem. So, any questions on that so far? All right. So a couple of questions that guys came out, uh, that came up. Uh, this, I think, was a question from Bennington, but it said, uh, some of the surrounding towns, um, other towns around us, um, and, and I'm also including some, some smaller towns in New York. Uh, because one of the comments at the Bennington meeting was, we hear you guys going to Housick all the time. We hear you going to Berlin all the time. And, uh, you know, it became, you know, rightly so, it's a concern. So we actually, um, we sent letters to all of the surrounding EMS agencies and all of their surrounding select boards and, I forgot what New York has, something similar. Whatever, whatever version of the select board is on that side of the, of the line. Uh, we put in, uh, basically what we said is that we, we are here. We ultimately want to be, provide the best care for, you know, if a patient needs our services, we want to help that patient if at all possible. But what we basically told all the towns was, is that, uh, if the agency calls us because they need our help, that's totally fine. But Bennington, Shastberry and Woodford are not subsidizing care in Berlin and Petersburg, as, as using that as an example. And we said that, um, if you, if you call us, that's, so basically, the, 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 the letter went to all the agencies and said, you're going to pay, and if you don't, we're going to send a bill to your town. And we are willing to work with you, you know, and, and, you know, the one solution is they can stop calling us. Because there's not that service in sort of the eastern Rensselaer County and some other other places around. Uh, but, uh, when, when we sent the letter and had follow-up phone calls and, and meetings with them, they, they seemed to come to the table and realize that like, they can't, the service isn't free. Sort of like your policing thing a minute ago, that we can't provide services, you know, ubiquitously without necessarily getting some sort of reimbursement or at least having a conversation about it. So, so far, uh, that's been going well. Uh, that all started August first, so it hasn't, and, and we only do it a couple hundred times a year, so the, the volume's not necessarily high. Uh, but that's something that we're, uh, making sure that there's not, uh, subsidization of other, uh, towns and municipalities based with Bennington, Shastberry and Woodford dollars. So one of the questions that I believe came out of this group was, does a paramedic take BLS calls? And the answer is yes. Um, so we, we try to send the appropriate crew for the appropriate call. Just keep in mind that we don't have a deep bench. So if you're in a metropolitan area that has ten paramedic units on and ten EMT units on, that you can send your paramedic unit to all your chest pains and you can send your EMT to all your, you know, hurt ankles. We have, you know, one or two medic crews on and then one or two other level crews on. So if we, we try to get a chest pain, you, you more than likely will get a medic. Uh, but keep in mind, you know, like I said, we don't have a deep bench, so if that, if you happen to, uh, if the, the BLS call, the, the first crew went out on a, on a hurt ankle and then the second call ends up being another hurt ankle, let's just go, let's stay with that for a minute. And we show up with a paramedic crews because that's, that's usually all we have. Another comment that came up is that you...
Sorry, uh, BLS?
Basic Life Support.
Basic Life Support.
Oh, sorry. I thought I fixed all those. Yes, sorry, Basic Life Support. So, and then the other question is, is that why sometimes do we see two ambulances on a, on a scene? And sometimes it's a manpower thing, sometimes it's a bad call and you need help. Um, more frequently what's happening is because we use that type of model is, uh, sometimes that, that basic crew will get there and they'll need a medic. So as the medic clears up, they'll come and then they'll do a crew swap on scene. So, as the medic clears up, they'll come and then they'll do a crew swap on scene. But obviously, they're both there, so they're going to help each other out until they get loaded, but that other truck in theory is available. Uh, so, that's a-
You'd probably see another one's ALS pop off, which is-
I fixed all those, I thought. Yeah, I missed that one somehow. Uh, so then another question was, "Why do you take everything on every call? And why do you have everything on every ambulance?" So, the, it is, it does get complicated, but, uh, the, what we are required to carry, based on our licensity level, is mandated by the state. So, the state says that to have an ALS ambulance, or a advanced life support agency, uh, you must have this amount of equipment on, on an ambulance. The other thing too is that we weren't sure exactly what we had when we were going to get there. Uh, there is, uh, some priority dispatch at the state level, but then Bennington PD, who does a phenomenal job, they're taking a message from another dispatcher someplace else. So, like the game of telephone that we all played growing up, you know, I tell Art a message, he calls you, and tells a message. There's a couple of details that he left out. Uh, you know, we try to minimize that, but that does happen to some. So, uh, the crew, the ambulance is equipped to the level of the crew that's on it, and, um, we will show up with normal com, complement of equipment and, and to take care of a majority of problems. A story I like to tell is that, not in Vermont, uh, but in another EMS agency that I worked at, uh, dispatch sent me on a puncture wound. Sounds very menial or whatever el-, you know, run-of-the-mill. Oh, puncture wound, I'm not going to handle that. When I got there, the gentleman had been shot in the chest. So, technically, it was a puncture wound. However, it's a little more serious than an actual puncture wound. Uh, so there, there's always that sort of issue. So, we have to be ready to deal with whatever, uh, sort of comes our way.
Um, yes, sir. Related question, when you're doing transports-
Yes.
Like just moving somebody from, from, or onto the hospital or whatever, uh, do you send it on ambulance, or do you have-
We'll send one of our, it'll be one of our ambulances.
It has, it's a-
And it'll be to the level of care that is needed for that call. So, our insurance, both the, the physician that's sending them and the insurance dictate the level of care that's needed on those. So, a lot of times if we're taking someone from, like, um, Southwest Vermont Medical Center to Albany, that's usually a paramedic-level trip because they need a, a, a paramedic to deal with drips and cardiac monitoring and all that kind of stuff. Someone going back to a nursing home or whatever will need a basic-level truck, and we'll send that. So, we try to do proper resource allocation.
Is Vermont not permitted to use a transport van?
A transport van?
Yes.
It depends on the, if it, if it meets, they can if they don't meet medical necessity.
Yeah, because listen, in a lot of my experience, that a lot of the transports which you didn't see, I was just stopping to, because it didn't require BLS or ALS, we were just taking someone back from the hospital to a nursing home, to their home, to another community.
Yeah.
And then you don't get reimbursed for that, for the unit you're sending, because it's on BLS.
And to, to take the deep date is that we don't, um, I would say that we turn down more, because now, it, basically, you have to meet medical necessity before we get called. So, uh, there's times that we, they call us and we're like, "That patient doesn't need an ambulance." And then we have to work with the, the hospital, or we, we try to work with the hospital to try to find them another route, whether it be Green Mountain Express, or, um, there are some other vendors around that actually do provide non-emergency wheelchair-based service.
Yeah, I know in Mass and in Minnesota they have, have some working that way. But you don't get calls from, like, the hospital saying, "This person has to go back to the getting nursing home." And they just need transport because it's one in the morning or something.
I wouldn't say that we, we don't get those calls, but we have a conversation with the, the hospital's been working very well with us as far as, um, the patient has to meet medical necessity before we'll, we'll take that trip, because it's-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, we're bound by insurance regulations.
Definitely need some kind of medical support to get them to aid.
Yes, yes. There will be an extreme one-off occasionally that we'll do, that it's the three in the morning, that, you know, let's enter the, the ten exceptions to the rule when the person needs a half-mile ride to make things work. We might do that, but that's a serious one-off and, and a case-by-case basis, and usually an extreme, extreme situation.
I was talking with a person that owned a taxi service that put them in a bind, because you, you said they don't even need medical assistance, but when the taxi driver got there, it was obvious that they, that, that taxi driver did not feel comfortable taking that patient because of couldn't walk and things like that. And so, that, they didn't have insurance for that, so all of a sudden, they had to deny, so that-
It gets a, I think the, the medical transport business is, is interesting, is probably the best way to explain it, you know? Because there's so many, the, those stories are, there's ones that fall, uh, squarely outside of needing an ambulance, but don't necessarily, but like you said, don't meet the criteria for a wheelchair, or don't meet the criteria for a wheelchair, but, you know, are probably too complicated for, for a cab, or anywhere on that spectrum. And, like everything else, we, we fix the big buckets. You know, if you squarely fit in the ambulance, well, that's an easy one. If you squarely fit in the wheelchair, well, that one's easy. If the person that fits right in the middle, uh, i- is, uh, is difficult. And to be honest, there's not a ton of resources in Southwest Vermont, or especially once you get past eleven, twelve at night, you know, until about five AM. Uh, you know, Green Mountain is phenomenal, they help out as much as they can, but they don't, you know, they typically only have one driver on, and it takes them, you know, X mile time to get there. They gotta get someone out of bed, gotta get them down there, get a bus, if it's in the middle, they gotta get the bus warm. Uh, and then potentially move that patient, so. All right, so, uh, I believe one of you guys asked, "How do we compare with other EMS agencies?" Uh, so we pulled some comparative data. This is me contacting those administrators or getting it from public sources. Uh, so, the approximate call volume is, is rough, uh, but this is me calling and saying, "Hey, how many full-time staff do you have? What's your total staff complement? How many ambulances do you have on the road? What do you, what's your daytime staffing versus nighttime staffing?" Uh, so it's, and then what amount of funding are they getting from their respective towns? Now, some of those, just like us, are, um, there's multiple towns sort of in that number. I'll let you guys look at that and ask me any questions, but that's not a whole lot to say about that.
Where's Rutland getting their money if they're not getting it from the towns?
So, Rutland is not in a competitive environment, and so they don't have to, uh, staff up. Their hospital has nobody else to call. So, they are only, they don't have to have on any extra ambulances. So, they can, uh, when their hospital needs to send somebody out, uh, they can have, or they can say, "It'll be a two-hour wait and we're going to send you out." We are not in that, that category. Um, the other thing too is they have a lot more volume, so their, their utilization's a lot higher. Uh, where the, when, when ambulances are rolling on the, on the road, that's minus the ones that aren't necessarily, the, the non-emergency, or excuse me, the nine-on-one calls that don't transport. But if, if, if you're transporting patients, then you're, I hate to say making money, but you're, that, that's a reimbursable service. Uh, where it's problematic is when you have gaps and, when you're, when you're, when you're paying for the readiness, and when you're, you're, you don't need an ambulance right now, but you start having chest pain, you want that ambulance. So, if those ambulances are moving more, that extra two or three thousand in calls is a better utilization of their time to where they can, they can staff more ambulances and make it more in line with the, the call volume, if that makes sense.
So, you're saying because of the volume of calls that they do, the ones that they don't get paid for is a smaller problem than it is for you?
Probably. I don't know exactly that. I don't know if I can answer that right now, Tim, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, is, is it fair to say that the, the money that you're asking us and Bennington to put up is for that gap that you were showing in the first slide? Is the, the transports that don't get, uh, that are not, that don't go to, the, the calls that don't get transported? That's what we have to pay for essentially, is that fair to say?
That's, that's one angle to look at, absolutely, and it, and the, uh, one of the things that, I'm getting ready to get to it, but it's, it's one of those things where we are, uh, the, the transfer business, which I know people pick on us sometimes for doing that, but Shasberry doesn't need one ambulance twenty-four-seven. You need, based on the time of day, you need point one ambulances or one point two. And Bennington needs one point eight ambulances up to two point three, two point six ambulances. So, I can't staff a point three of an ambulance, that's really hard to do. So, what we do is, um, you will put, let's, let's go with two point three. So, we put three ambulances on duty. So, there's going to be a period of time where one or two of those aren't in use, because that's just- So then, I'm trying to fill that time with that transfer business to help offset that salary cost to make the, uh, make it, you know, make the utilization of services better. So, we're not turning away nine-on-one business, we're trying to help augment, you know, keeping patients moving, giving that excellent care, and then also being able to have that, that other income stream.
Tim, well, part of the issue is the fact that there's a certain percentage that you don't get reimbursed for.
That's endemic across the whole industry. Very few people have gone the route of trying to charge for that because of all sorts of issues. However, the biggest issue, I think personally, um, is the fact that the insurance model is broken. The government has squeezed down reimbursements so much that Medicare and Medicaid cannot, do not pay for, uh, an ambulance service, it just doesn't pay for it. And that problem is manifest all over the country now. But you can't, but to me, the fundamental problem, more than anything else, is just that the insurance model broke apart.
Well, yeah, we all are living with that.
Right.
At all kinds of levels, yeah.
Well, it's a necessity. I mean, just as an emergency room is a necessity, you know, so, and they get paid, they go into the emergency room, so they-
Right.
And what's the average in-physician time for you guys anyway? I mean, are you there at the barracks all the time, or do you-
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're a-
So, it's not like the old days where, like, Bob Collins would get called and you have to go from Earth Bennington to Rip-
Oh, no, there's, uh, we're, uh, we're fully staffed twenty-four-seven. Uh, there's, depending on the time of day and day of week, you know, there's a, uh, crews in-station. But then there, and, and as a public cry, if anybody wants to come volunteer, I'll give you an application. Uh, but we, we have trouble filling some of our even, uh, paid slots now. So, it's, uh, you know, there, there's just not a, there's not a lot of people in the EMS industry that are going in. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a very difficult position to be in. There's no way coming from home anymore.
Well, I understand too, the call volume when it was, well, truly volunteers, like, a thousand calls. Now it's six thousand calls, and it's John, causes-
Sixteen to seventeen calls a day. You've got an aging population, other problems coming in on top of that with opioid epidemic. Um, just, I, I think a lot of it has to do with the, you know, just the average age, you know, all over America's going up. But it's just a radically different time, and you, you can't do six thousand calls with volunteer force, so.
The other thing, though, the expectations, I believe, have changed, that you, just like police firing a mask, when you're having chest pain, you get into a car wreck, you know, twenty years ago, it was a lot, you probably necessarily didn't mind waiting fifteen or twenty minutes for an ambulance. Now, you know, you call, you're expecting to see somebody show up very quickly. So, the, the expectations, I think, from the public and from everybody else are that we're there and we're ready. And, you know, we, we try to break the doors within sixty seconds, so we're out the, out the door and, and on our way to you.
Quick response.
Yeah, oh, yeah, try to save, real quick.
Well, I mean, it's still, I mean, I, I'm confused back that, you know, if the emergency room sounded like the, the, the hospital, it can get paid by the insurance companies, why can't I, that, that's-
Well, we, we can, we can, but it-
But it only if you drop them off at the hospital.
Yes, yeah.
Well, that, that's what-
But then also the problem is the reimbursement rates for Medicaid and Medicare.
You've got to keep the lights on too.
Yeah, just not even, not even at an appropriate rate that you could pay for. So, it's a, it's a combination issue, really.
Well, I think, I think we talked about this once before, where they, they, just from my own, um, observation, where I've seen older people, they call and they just go, uh, because they need a ride to the hospital. It's not so much they need a ambulance, they just need a ride there. It's like kind of easier for a taxi.
It is, and I will tell you that, um, I think, I don't know if we talked about it, you know, I-
But that will, but that, but then you get paid for that taxi ride.
I can tell you that some of the federal payers are questioning some of those now. So, you're just wanting a ride to the hospital, and you call and we show up, and we have this model that's built in the United States, where we take, you call us and you say, "I want to go to the hospital, we're like, "All right, let's go." Like, that's-
That's your thing, that's what we do.
That's what we do. The insurers now are pushing back, saying, "Why, why did they call on you?" I'm like, "I don't, we're a public service, like, I don't have, like, I don't have an, can I tell them? I don't want to come, you know, I don't want to come deal with your ex, whatever pains."
We're busy right now.
Yeah, it's like, that's not, I don't want that in the front page of the banner, that we're, that- Bennington Rescue decides not to respond to calls based on, uh, but I think that type of model or that conversation nationally is coming of, uh, you know, I, I think if you, five to seven years from now, uh, at this table, I'll be telling you that, uh, systems will be in place where if you call for an ambulance, and we're going to say, you know, I'm going to use Art. No, Art, you don't need to go to the hospital right now. What we are going to do is we're going to make a, an appointment with your primary care physician tomorrow. You know, we're, we, we, we checked your vital signs, we've done all this stuff, we've called and talked to the doc at the hospital, we don't think you're in any, any immediate issue, we're not taking you to emergency department right now. And Art says, "I want to go," and we'll say, "No, I don't think you're, you're not going to go right now." And there will be systems in place federally for us to, now, we won't be getting tons of money, but there'll be reimbursements based from, from the insurance system, from the federal system, to say, "You evaluate him, and you can call me back if you need, you know, and maybe, maybe we work with the medical transport company in the morning to get you to your primary care physician, or go to urgent care, or express care, or whatever the solution might be." But I think it's going to be a, a combination of that, and the healthcare system we know today is going to be a little bit different from the years to come.
I was going to point out, I always find this a really interesting chart, and you see the economies of scale in these types of services, so that you have Manchester, who's gaining almost the same amount of support as us, but they're really getting, just doing a thousand calls. So, they still need those ambulances. Rescue Eton, Brattleboro, was covering an enormous area. That accounts for the inefficiencies in staff. They have min-, how many towns was it that you mentioned?
I think it's fifteen.
Yeah, it's a huge service area. So, you can see that, that causes a lot of inefficiency. But you can see Rutland is actually in an enviable position, where they have, you know, significantly more calls, but in fact, they don't have a competitive system, a situation hospital, and yet their service footprint is pretty small. And so, they're, they're quite efficient.
Well, you, you know, is that a scandal of an organization, or is that part of the hospital?
Separate, they're exactly the same as we are. Five-on-one, C three, yes, sir. Uh, all right, any other questions on that? Great conversation. Uh, so, one of the questions, I think, again, came out of this, is how, how are EMS charges established? Um, so, one is the level of care, so, first is type of call, so is it an emergency or non-emergency? Those are built on totally separate rates. Uh, the level of care provided, so ALS versus BLS, advanced life supports are paramedic level versus just an EMT level. Uh, and then, uh, once again, this goes back to the, the way EMS has always done things, and this is a federal thing, not a Bennington Rescue thing, but, um, in addition to whether it's an emergency, whether it's ALS or BLS, and then the number of loaded miles, and just like a cab, we have a loaded mile charge. So, you know, you and your neighbor half mile down the road, your bills might be different by X dollar, because that's, that's the, how the, the charge system is built. Uh, I told you already, there's not a charge if we transport. So, um, so what are allowable expenses? So, federal system, which I'll, I'll tell you about, we'll hit in just a second, is no matter what you bill them, they're going to say, "We're going to, this is, this is what you get." And for playing in the federal system, um, you get this amount, but then you can't go after the patient for this amount. That's sort of the, the deal with playing with Medicare, Medicaid, track care, that type of thing. And I already talked to you about medical necessity getting harder to justify, even in emergencies. So, I believe one of you guys asked about walking through a call. So, um, I took a random example, and the charge amount that, that goes out was about five hundred and fifty dollars on, on, I can't remember what this level call was, I think it's for a basic-level call. Uh, so the first question that comes up is, "Where do you guys get those rates?" We use a market analysis based, the Rescue Ecs and the Brattlebrows and, and the Rutlands, and, and using sort of a Vermont market. We, based off of that, and usually we're within one to two percent of that, and every year, it sort of gets adjusted. The Vermont Ambulance Association provides some guidance on that as well. So then, um, I talked about that- Uh, so then, um, I talked about that amount, that hundred and eighty-four dollars, or, in this example, is something that the federal government says, that's fine, that's great, that's not what we're, you're, whatever, whatever that top number is, that red number could go up some more, you're, you're not getting that. So what, what comes out is this Medicare allowable. Basically, they say is, this is what we'll allow for this call. Alright, so this is what, we as Medicare thinks you should, you should pay for this call, or we should pay you for this call. And what Medicare says is, we're gonna pay you eighty percent of that. So of that five hundred and forty-nine that we bill out, we get about two eighty-nine, twenty-two that, that potentially comes in the door. Uh, that seventy-five fifty-eight moves over to the patient, and if they have a secondary insurance or some other sort of supplemental thing, uh, that potentially can get paid. But, you know, probably half the time that actually happens where someone pays the balance due to them. Actually, it's probably sixty, sixty percent now. Uh, so why is this concerning? Well, as I said, that, that, that red part, um, is some, no matter what the top number is, we have to write off the red part. Uh, our mark, our rates are, are right with market, uh, levels. And I believe if you guys have talked to, um, or heard the CEO of Blue Cross Blue Shield talk or MVP, and it was a big, big hot topic actually during legislative session, this whole cost shifting, uh, because your commercial payers pay that top amount. So if you have Blue Cross Blue Shield and we send you a bill, they're paying five forty-nine or maybe they're paying five twenty-nine and they're sending you a twenty dollar copay bill. Uh, so there's, the, the big term last year was cost shifting. So what's happening is, is that, uh, basically, your federal payers aren't paying that, and then your commercial payers are paying the full boat, and there's not necessarily a heavy medium.
Yeah, but part of that's next step, where the commercial pay making up what Medicaid doesn't pay.
Somewhat, yes. It, not, if the two calls were equal, yes, if you're doing the same sort of...
Medicare pays much less than Medicare.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, what the government's paying is not what private insurance is paying.
If, if you can get, not all...
Private insurance is paid, build what they gotta need because the government isn't paying it.
Yeah.
Is there any way off from the insurance?
We're five oh one.
We're five oh one C three.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's a good, yeah, sure, no problem.
Uh, so where that can, Ken, you're absolutely right. Where that becomes problematic is, if you look at it here on the right side, uh, that forty-eight plus seventeen, all of this type of, this pay structure, you know, is the, uh, closest, you know, sixty, seventy percent of what we're, you know, sixty-five percent of what our business is, so this is, this is our everyday life. That commercial payer is only thirty percent of what actually, uh, so of the hundred patients that we see, thirty of them might have commercial insurance, and that's not gonna make up the difference, if that makes sense.
Well, they also do customer payments too, the customer...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They don't automatically pay the top one.
As if we're participating. Much we do in most, EMS is usually, at least up until last year, um, most insurance companies provide, they do pay, EMS is a covered charge, even though we're not necessarily participating in, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield has the whole participating providers where you go to certain docs and all that. EMS is usually exempt from that, so usually EMS is a bill of commercial insurance typically get paid. Not everybody has commercial insurance. Uh, and then private pay, five percent of our calls, that still are those that don't have insurance or are self-insured or whatever else, and, actually, if you look at our right, the, the amount that we write off every month, uh, the majority of that is the private paying of insurance, that, you know, we can send them bills and they fall into our thirty, sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty day cycle.
And we do use a collection agency too.
Do you use the same charge, uh, scale for workman's comp as opposed to non-workman's comp?
Yes, yes. And that's a very, very low percentage, I believe. That's, that's probably one call, two calls a quarter, as far as I, that's me knowing that one, I think. Any other questions on this? Does that help make, lay it all a little better and make some, try to make it make sense? Uh, so how, how can you guys support us? Uh, and, and we're kind of pushing this, is that the hospital uses this rotation to assign transfers. And one of the things that we're really pushing for is that, you know, we want the patient to have a choice, we want them to say, you know, you, you need to go to the, to the person who, right, you need, if it's not an emergency situation, if it's emergency, get what you need to do, go to the hospital. But if you or your family members have a choice in your care, request us, because if, if we can use some of that, uh, you know, that point six of the time that we're not doing business, if we're doing that, moving your family, friends, or loved ones, um, that's how you can support us. So, um, the more, uh, the more efficient our services become and the more utilization that we, we get, then that's gonna potentially reduce the amount of need that we're gonna need for the towns that keep that available, because the more we're, then it just makes sense, if you're utilizing stuff more, the amount of time that you're sort of paying for readiness decreases.
Uh, this is a very frustrating issue, if you imagine, for a bank and rescue squad because they've addressed it many times over many years, and yet the hospital insists, I mean, they could call an ambulance down in Williamstown to take a patient from Bennington to Bennington. And of course, they'll take them a couple. Uh, but it's frustrating because we're, we're the actual one servicing their partner.
Uh, so then the last thing I have is just a, a quick comparison of, uh, what we did. First of all, I applaud you guys, because you guys really worked with us to, to up the amount and to, to talk about, uh, you got us into the budget, all that type of thing. Uh, the one thing that we are really trying to be cognizant of is that because we're serving three towns, we're really trying to keep all the towns equal, or, or trying to make sure that all the towns are, uh, no one is over, overcompensating or undercompensating and, you know, it's a, and it's a conversation. I know Tim and Stu came and met with us, uh, trying to figure out how best to, to make this work, and that, you know, we wanna be a part of this, we wanna be a part of the conversation. Tony joining our board was phenomenal, is a fantastic asset, so, uh, that's all I had, unless you guys have any questions? And, and, and always, if there are, at any time during the year, uh, you know, I try to pop in every once in a while, just come say to the meeting, but if there are data that you guys want, or reports, or information, or you want me to come talk about something, or there's an issue, or like this addressing issue, that's really problematic, uh, please let us know. I will, I'll grab the data, you know, it might take me a week to get everything done, get it into our queue, but if you wanna know X amount of this, you know, I can get your report and get it back to you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, unless there are any, uh, any other pressing questions, we're gonna move on.
Sure. I got this one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, uh, with the matter of the screen, we had the, there you go, where you got your Medicaid allowable.
Yep.
I'm sure, like, if you go out and you, you go to a call and a guy's got a broken leg, that's gonna cost you, for your material and your time and your whatever, one certain amount. If that same call was, uh, say, a heart attack, then you got different drugs, a different time, a different, so your cost is gonna be...
Higher.
Probably significantly more on that call, but you can't get it anymore.
Correct. Then the, the, the charge system is ba, so, years ago, they did the whole, like what the hospitals used to do, if you guys remember, there was like little stickers on everything in the hospital, and you went into the, the hospital and you got like, you got your little charge sheet, and there was like every sticker around everything that they used. EMS used to build that as well. Uh, in mid-two thousands, they went to a, uh, sort of a one fee fits all.
Yeah.
So they created a basic life support cost and advanced life support cost, and then the insurance industry was built all around those things, and they say, this is what it should cost to take care of an ALS patient. And I can tell you, when we use a lot of our medications and we use some of that, the stuff that really saves people's lives, it's really expensive and that, and the, you know, five or six hundred dollars that we get doesn't cover it. But you're right, and some of the basic level calls, you know, uh, as far as the actual true using of stuff, sometimes those do...
But it's a medicine you gotta use to, you know, stop a heart attack or whatever you do. Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought.
You, you get a little increment, how big is the increment between ALS and BLS? You get an increment for that, but it's a flat rate?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's about a hundred and twenty dollars, a hundred and forty dollars?
Yeah, probably.
It's from an ALS charge to a BLS charge.
Yeah.
A year ago, when you were here, you showed what your expenses were, what your income was.
Yep.
How much you were losing, divided it by the number of people, and came up with twelve dollars and some odd cents a person. With all the cost savings you've done, has that number changed?
That...
You can, don't I, you know, you can answer that some other time.
Okay.
But that's, I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
It looks like you've done a lot to do that, but how did it affect us?
Gotcha, okay.
Alright?
Yes, sir.
The other question, Brian and I talk about it often, Brian lives above the chocolate bar, chocolate bar, and so he gets Arlington.
Rather have any insurance...
Right. And thinking about it, it's BLS service, and Bennington has ALS service, and Brian's worried, I, I would be worried too about, you know, at my age anyway, heart attack.
Yeah, is there any formal agreement about where the line is, or does anybody know anything about that? Literally, I can't be too far up, I'm right near...
Must have been arbitrary.
Uh, I actually don't have any idea. The, the service that Arlington provides is a little bit above BLS, I forget the exact role...
It's an intermediate...
Yeah, the intermediate level, which is not common in a lot of places, but they do have some onboard capabilities. It's not ALS service, I mean, it is...
Technically, Vermont's classified ALS, but is, they don't have it twenty-four seven and it's...
No, they only have it from six, six to six during the day, Monday through Friday, and then the rest is all BLS, that's all you're gonna get in Arlington.
They occasionally, I think they do have a couple nights, about a, a...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what nights those are.
Yeah, it's, it's basically when they come, come around.
But there's...
But as a formalization, there's nothing that I'm aware of that formalized that, that...
I am a lot closer to Arlington, that's a fact.
Yeah.
But then by the time that there are volunteer, I guess that during the day they, they have people, don't they, don't they...
During the day, they're staffed all day long. But I think we're originally generated from a, somewhere back when the first ambulances were delivered, and Bennington was volunteer, and Arlington was volunteer, and who can get up and down the hill quicker?
Right.
So let's draw a line across here.
Yeah.
Uh, and what you have now is Arlington sometimes will go down to Bennington, when, when you guys don't have a crew, you guys come up.
Right.
Because you come all the way up to my house in Sunderland to get my neighbor across the street, and you guys were busy, Manchester and Arlington were pouts, so there's a lot that goes back and forth. Sometimes, no matter what you do, you are going to have, because I've seen a substantial delay in, in a response. My wife was transported a couple weeks ago, my son was on duty in Arlington, and he was somewhere on another call in another town, and we had to wait for Manchester for a half hour to get down, so it's...
Yeah.
Kind of, uh, the service, because you're in a rural area, is always gonna be, they overlap enough, but if, if you had needed an ALS response to your house, above what they can offer during the day, then Bennington would come up in one of those meet calls you have to provide. But there's nothing, I don't think there's anything more than an informal thing when ambulances, where are we gonna draw a line? Who's, at the rate ambulances moved in the fifties, who can get to this arc quicker? You know, I doubt it's more significant than that.
One other thing for us, the number of, the number of non-transport calls that Shasbury has pulled in historically, or in the last six months, or if you extract your, let it out.
Yeah.
Get that to us, if you will, please.
Yes. Uh, I can tell you that, I don't know the, I don't know what the number is, but I can tell you that you guys had...
Yeah.
You're right at forty-nine, fifty percent for twenty seventeen.
Okay.
So...
What's the percentage of drug overdose?
That, um, so the one, gotta be careful sometimes saying that, because I'm assuming you're meaning opioids. So when we pull our data, keep in mind that if you have an opioid overdose, or, or a suspected opioid overdose, and also your grandkid happens to grab grandma's meds off the counter, or you take too much of XYZ, all three of those classified in our system as overdoses. So we, we have to tease out the data of exactly what it is that you want, which we can do.
Well, to opioids, that'd be...
Okay.
I'm just curious, because I've never really knew we had a problem until a few years ago. You know, it all, you know, it's not...
Maybe they're gonna follow them.
It's grown a lot larger than I ever thought.
Very sad.
Is there anything you can imagine that we, Shasbury, could do about that high rate of, uh, calls that don't require hospitalization?
No, I, I tell you what, there's, there probably will be a time where we're gonna come to you guys and, and have a conversation, but I'm, and it's more probably to get your guys' power and influence to try to get certain players at the table to start moving on, uh, resources, if that makes sense. So there's, there's some, uh...
Community resources for you?
Yeah, yeah, there, there's definitely, I would say that there are a lot of, there's a whole lot of folks doing a lot of great things here, and at certain point in time, all those, those resources have sort of ran their course. So I, I know a couple high utilizers that you guys have, that, uh, different home healthcare agencies have been there, and sort of both have ran the whole gamut, uh, different services from the hospital, we're there all the time, um, so without necessarily going into a whole lot of specifics, at certain point in time, something's gotta give. So we've got a, we've got to bring in insurance companies or somebody else and say, like, we've got, this person has been through every service that this county provides, yet it's still, you know, the person needs help, what can we do? What can the town do? What can we, what help do you guys need to make this, to make this a reality? That, something along those lines, I think, could absolutely be a, a conversation point.
Okay. Yeah, I can imagine that you can probably name the people in Shasbury that, uh, drive those figures.
I...
I imagine it's a, a handful of repeat offenders that we're talking about.
There are a few, and, and it's not, your town is not unique. Bennington, Woodford, all have folks that need our services higher than normal, and that's, you know, that's what we're here for, but it's, um, and trying to get them into programs and the, and get them into, uh, programs and systems that allow for them to help, and then also, they have to stay compliant with those. That's the other thing that's frustrating, you get someone, you know, uh, some meals delivered at home, and you get them rides to their primary care doc, and you get someone to drop off their, their prescription medications, but then, you have to take their meds, and they have to go to their primary care doc appointment, and they have to eat their food, and they can't, you know...
Yeah, but what are you gonna do if you get one, calls you all the time and wants a ride, the next time you call you, they're doing something serious.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna be talking to a lawyer.
Yeah, and our side's, and that's why we have to treat anything, anybody that calls nine one one is treated as a, as a true emergency.
You gotta treat them all, like it's serious.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I will look into, uh, the origins of this dividing line.
Well, see, particularly when you got one staff, you got one volunteer...
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, it takes a while for them to collect and gather.
I don't know where it started. Let me see if there's any documents anywhere in the building or something.
I was just curious.
I'm kinda curious too.
Okay.
Because even the line is somewhat vague to me, you know, so, uh, I'll, I'll check with Arlington, see if they have any records, I'll see what's up in our storage area.
Our house.
Yeah, I can see.
Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what you do.
Okay, now we enter the Dave Kiran part of the meeting.
All right, well, let's go back and start us rolling. Uh, just give you a quick rundown, it's been mostly grading last week and this week. Uh, essentially, the order of the day is just start getting the roads ready for winter. We have three projects left. Uh, one is, uh, putting a type of French grain that was designed with the state engineers down Crumble Hill. The three stone mattresses have been put into East Road and they're kind of interesting to look at because if you go to one side of the road, you can actually see the water just. Coming right through already, nonstop. We have the project over at Shasbury Hollow, which hopefully will be next week. But with all the rain and everything, the pavers are behind, the pavers are consuming the trucking we need. So, uh, Dailies has been making the material for us. As soon as we can arrange the trucks, they're gonna start that project and that, that's just fabric and, and surface. So it'll take about five days, it's, it's a large project, much larger than we originally intended and it's gonna eat up a large chunk of the budget. Then we have, uh. Just finishing up some ditching we have and those, those are the major projects to finish the year. As I mentioned earlier, Myers Road, our project for that, when we had the state engineers look at that, they really wanna survey it and. Look at it one-time fix instead of just going up and doing the same thing all the time. So we'll have to deal with that again this mud season, but when we fix it, it'll be fixed.
Is it a high cost for a state engineer?
No, it's, it's free to get a state engineer.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so it's just getting into, into and getting the information in front of them. And they come up and spec, we've done test holes with the engineers and the test hole checking the soil sites and, you know, making these recommendations. We have, uh, we'll be cutting back brush and limbs and things as we lead up into winter. A lot of it's gonna move into winter prep now is, is what, what we're looking at. Uh, I know the idea of the brush has come up and, and working on it more. I've talked to our contractor, our contract for the last few years has been to do the one pass. We can easily adjust the contract so he can whack back, uh, twice as much and go up high. But we never specified that, so we're gonna look at the cost of that and we can start getting into that in the spring. What else do we have? Oh, there's three. Uh, if you might remember, Cory was in about doing the, the apron on Cory Drive. Which, I find what it needs, but we, we're talking to, uh, Lionel. Thank you, Liam, just getting there for a minute, about adding on East, East, uh, Lower East Road. The apron on that is really bad, the apron on Elm is bad. And we're gonna try and get a price for four or five of them and then, yeah, it's will be in there. That'll be the paving work, uh, for this year. But these are bad aprons that, we don't have a major project going on because we don't have to get the state grant, so we'll just fix these for this year.
You were saying there was a five-day project that's gonna eat a lot of the budget, which project was that?
That's Shasbury Hollow.
Shasbury Hollow.
Yeah, it's up to about seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, it's a very long stretch and, and it's all material, I mean, it's all material. Renting the extra trucks we need really isn't that big an expense. And we have to rent a vibratory roller and, uh, it's just time consuming.
Before winter time, we ought to take a look at the column that's in front of the Elm barracks because we keep losing road.
What needs to be done, which we've already talked about, is we need, yeah, it needs to be extended out and then covered over, that will be done before.
Okay, good enough.
Uh, let's see, what else is going on? That might be a stat I can think of at the moment.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's enough to keep you busy.
We took on Kyle, uh, our person in the parks has been doing an excellent job, the parks committee has come in and complimented him on the. The amount of work he's getting done there, they really look very nice. I think that's about it, I wasn't really ready to.
I was gonna ask you a question, I, I had a young gentleman from North Bennington, he's about seven years old, Finn Adrianz. He, uh, asked a question, he said, why does the sidewalk stop on the North Bennington? Shasbury line, where, where you go into Shasbury for Bank Street, Bank Street, North Bennington heading in.
Cause they paid for it and we didn't?
At the right moment, yeah.
That's the, the simple answer, we.
That's right.
Didn't pay for the sidewalk.
Well, and there was not a lot of, uh, I mean, I, I do realize there used to be like a, a walk path that would take you probably down to the, um, the dirt road there. Then from there, it would just be, you're on the road.
Yeah, kind of, everything kind of peters out as you get further down, uh.
But the houses start petering out, that's.
Yeah, and that's usually in most, you know, let's face it, right here, most roads don't have sidewalks at all.
Right.
I mean, a lot of these didn't have sidewalks before this project, so. Yeah.
So I'm sure he'll be watching cat TV to get his answer.
Well, you know, I drive that road myself several times a day and quite frankly, I don't see very much pedestrian traffic there. It would be nice to have, but it's just not a priority, given that, you know, we never get.
Yeah.
Half the paving done that we need to.
I just thought it was kinda great that such a young man would be asking a question like that.
Well, imagine it this way, our corner costs like a hundred and eighty thousand, so.
Right, right.
Even if you straighten it out, it still costs a lot.
Dave, did you, did they ever get that culvert in, or did you consider, uh, put that culvert in on the lower end of Glassland Drive? Remember I talked to you about that?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the table. Uh, we have a, a long list of culverts. The culvert's backed up and, uh, part of what I'll get into with the garage and planning out the garage is, is we may continue. Culverts and ditching and other winter prep through October. And look at doing the transfer station, uh, rough grading during the winter because a lot of it's taking trees down. Uh, which we now have, people will have quite a bit of experience with that. And look to do the, the grading and the site work in the spring. And that's contingent on the bids we get is where we can go. There's an interesting, I'm getting ahead of myself, the interesting thing is, we'll have the building bid, construction, the main package by November. And then we can see where that matches up with the estimates that we receive and the amount we, we bonded and the amount we have in. So there might be funds to take over and say, okay, we'll hire this excavator, whoever wins the bid. And they'll do all the fine site work with transfer station. So the other thing, reason that might be put back is the state wants a few more documents on transfer station movement. It's not issue, it's paperwork. So we can't start digging until we have the stamp of approval. It's one of those things. But we'll get, we'll get to that when we get to the town garage in a minute.
Yeah, uh, also one other point there that you mentioned, the cutting back the trees. I, I really hope that if we're talking to the contractor about cutting back the trees, we're not talking about picking the mower up and sticking it in the trees. I really don't think that's the right way to, to do that job.
Go up, uh, Daniel's Road.
Yeah.
Go up Daniel's Road, it's totally different than what it was a month ago. Please.
I go down Daniels every day.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's, there's, you know.
I know you said it looked like a bombing off and I kinda agree with that, but that's all greened up and if, if we don't do something like that, it just overwhelms us, but that's.
Yeah, the only, the only thing on Daniel's Road that caught my attention was, I wondered how or if we stayed exactly in our road. That, that's, that's the part, cause you know, one.
I can't agree, I can't argue with that.
One, one is six feet off the road, two is twelve feet off the road. It's twenty, twenty-five feet from the center line, so if you're in your fourteen-foot lane, there you go, and you can just get real close here. So I don't know if we went too far there, but, uh, I know the people there liked it, so they did, they were, I didn't hear any complaints, we heard compliments on it. So I know what it looks like and, and they do a road by my house every year that looks like a bombing off. It all comes back to have to do it the next year.
If you're cutting trees, you cut them with a saw, you don't cut them with a mower. And yeah, that just exploded trees, it's just ugly.
Yeah, we're, the only way that's gonna be possible to do it is with the mower. You, you have, you have to turn that thing up and start whacking them down. And then it all, it grows back sufficiently so that it doesn't look bad in a couple of weeks. Cause otherwise.
You could do some of it in the winter too.
Sorry?
You could do some of it in the winter time when it starts snowing too.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, that's one reason why, you know, we can look at changing the contract. I've already talked to, we came in, we had a talk last week about a change for next year, cause we had been happy with the one pass and that. Things have grown in this year, everything ruined a lot, so it's time to attack it. Part of having the, the five, six-man crew is, you know, as we go into winter, once the grading is done, once we can do it. Take, take things out, take the pole saws out and start cutting things back, you can make it perfectly acceptable for the winter. And then adjust the contract for the springtime. We'll go two passes, but you, you do have to tilt that mower up. Cause with, with fifty miles of this and probably forty solid miles need to have that done. It, it has to be machine done or we'll never get anywhere.
You don't have to do it every year either, Dave.
No, no, that's the thing, we.
We'll do it every other year.
When we went to the first, the one pass, three years ago now. That was fishing, cause everything was cut back. So we're gonna go second year, now this year, maybe we should have thought about cutting it back this year, but so we'll get it done in the fall and next year we'll go in and we'll cut it back again. And then, no, you don't have to come back and do the whole thing the following year. Uh, we might not even be able to cover as much as we think next year, but, uh, it's just something that has to get back down there.
Why, why do we have to do that? I mean, we, the reason we have to cut the back is to keep the truck, the limbs from hitting cars when they go by, right? We don't need to just have six foot of empty roadside for, for the sake of having it.
You don't wanna fill your ditch up with vegetation.
And it keeps the road dry. If you daylight the edges of the road, it's, it's more likely to keep the road better.
Some of the two things, when you get in the winter time, and you get ice on them trees, they're right out into your trucks. When you're plowing, you can break windows and mirrors, cars and everything else. You get, you get a half an inch of ice on there, you'll be surprised how that pulls that down.
And that's some of the things we wanna address this fall, because you can see this one, and you can just imagine it. And so just pole saws and we'll take our tractor out and wax some stuff back. Uh, but we can't, like, we can't do in preparation for this winter, everything like, again, with road. It's more like, let's move and take this stuff back where it needs to be taken back. And then we'll program it in for next year to get it all done.
Okay. Any more road stuff? All right. Bennington, Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance report and an ordinance change.
Okay, we, we have to start an ordinance procedure, as you remember, we passed an ordinance to, to be part of the solid waste district. Uh, one of the, a small change that we all agree to, all the haulers agree to is, we required quarterly, actually the state required us to require. Quarterly reports from all the haulers on everything they did, it's an onerous paper passed that all the contractors are complaining about. They send them to us and frankly, I, I don't need them, because they send all this detail to the state. And this, this has nothing to do with stuff they have to send to the state. So it's by agreement of all the members of the board that we will take this out at the request of the haulers. The only thing coming out is, uh, haulers and facilities shall report on the quantities of municipal solid waste, organics and mandated recyclables. Collected in the town for each preceding quarter on April fifteenth, July fifteenth, October fifteenth and January fifteenth of each year on forms to be provided by the town. So it just created paperwork for our haulers to submit to us, that I file. And they file all the same things on state forms to the state, so.
So it's available to you if you wanna call?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can find out whatever we want, like, it's pick TAM, cause they're in our TAM. Anything we wanna know that came out of TAM, we, we can find out. But what we have to do is do this just as if it was an ordinance. So we'll have the first reading, warn, full tilt next meeting, we have to read it three times. We adopt, I put an ad in the paper. So just warning you, we're gonna start going through that process at the next meeting. And then we'll remove that little line from the ordinance.
We all agreed on that?
Certainly, yeah. The next one is to change the cemetery fee schedule. Took the liberty of typing up a little motion there.
Yeah, thank God, Dan.
Okay, on the, uh, September seventeenth Cemetery Committee meeting. Ken Coonred made, made clear that, uh, the corner markers that we were charging one fifty for are now costing one, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. So we're at a twenty-five dollar loss for that. So, but they made a motion four oh to request that the select board modify the fee schedule, allowing them to charge one seventy-five, which is the actual cost of the corner markers. So we need a motion and a vote of the board to increase to one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion from ART to amend the Shasbury Cemetery operating procedures dated November seventh, twenty sixteen, attachment B corner markers. Increasing the corner marker cost from one fifty to one seventy-five due to increased cost of markers. Second by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero.
Let me just sign that and hand it back, I'm just gonna make that part of the official record. There's no question there. And Coal Hall renovation project, yet again, we're back to Coal Hall. The date's on here, I just formatted this. What I really wanted to do was get the history out, uh, so they can see where this is coming from. According to the state, the state has guidelines on, on all this, of course. Actually, the Secretary of the Interior is standing for rehabilitation. Anything we're doing in this project will be within that because we're not changing any structural things in the building. We're not destroying any of the historic aspects. And in a hundred years, if the town decides they really wanna restore this space, we can pull the nails out of the walls and they'll all come back again. So it's really not doing anything to damage the historical integrity of the building. But I am encouraging the board members to talk to anyone they know who's interested in the building, uh, for feedback. And I ask the public for feedback on this, we're going to create this space into offices and a small meeting space here. Uh, and again, most of this is in, within the, uh, the guidelines of the report in two thousand and nine, these cabinets behind me should not be on this floor. And we'll reduce the weight load on here, this building is not suitable for larger meetings than what we do now. So it's, it's just kinda moving forward. The total cost of this will probably, probably be around forty thousand dollars, it'll be the last major project inside the building. Uh, we haven't had any leaks other than with those downstairs. Uh, which I'm going to try and put in a historical, historic preservation grant for. Honestly, I'm not very hopeful for it, because it's a kind of a, a small thing, doesn't meet a lot of the high points, they have to schedule what they'll assign points for. And we can't use those kind of grants to do the construction, we can't use those grants to paint the building, we can't use those grants for a whole month and then it's, uh. The windows is the closest thing I can come up with, cause everything else is pretty much wrong. The only thing that isn't on the renovation project I have in here was my original idea, is if you have a ceiling in here, you're gonna have to vent between the roof and here. And I would just put a, a sensor activated fan out the front window, but then I realized that's gonna upset the art, historical thing. So we have to run something like up the, the steeple. And connect it, and there's a window that's on the ridgeline that points to the back of the building. You can just put the fan out there, I know we wouldn't have seen it, so it would really hurt and it's all. That, that's not in here. Uh, we talked about, my original plan was to have a sheet rock so it would look, uh, better, but you have to have access to everything above here because. At some point it may be. The roof itself, I had Doxy here and they're gonna come do a minus slate repair. And it just looks like, based on the age of building, we're going to have to have them here, now I had them here three years ago to fix the slate. And they're just gonna have to come back every two to three years and we're gonna slate on this whole building. The CE will say some of the hangers are just given from, from age. The whole thing was replaced, I think, in, in two thousand and nine, something like that. The roof is taken off and new things were put underneath it, so.
Boy, dude, man.
Yeah, it's a slate roof. And historically, to make it, to keep it in historical context, there's no way you can do anything else with it. Now, there is this little weird dip in the roof line over here that I'll have a roofing contractor look at. Cause structurally, all the major structural issues were addressed, uh, in early two thousand and ten, eleven and twelve. So the building itself is fine, except for the possible weight load on this floor. So it's really just a, a strict maintenance program for a very old building.
Do we have a roofing inspection done every year, like in the spring after winter?
No, no, but that is part of what I'm talking about now is, cause I had this roof replaced here a couple of years ago. And I had this, the, the, uh, slate fixed three years ago. And now I'll be back, this will be four years, and I think like every two years, I'm just gonna have them come around and just look at the roof and go fix what you see out of place.
That's right, I mean, I have a slate roof on my house, that's what I do every, every spring, go out and look and see what's.
You have to go see what's moved where and, uh, it's the only way to keep up with a place like this. Uh, the exterior painting will come in time. And the steeple in the front probably be first, cause these windows are of course, the biggest drawback, the painting, it was. Costs a fortune to paint these windows, nobody wants them, you know. I know I wouldn't bid on it.
So we're gonna figure out a way to fit the roof into the window bays? The ceiling, I mean, into the window bays?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's already, it's, I've already, it's easy to do. You just cut in, you can put the whole thing, cause it's a drop ceiling, it's actually, in terms of, it's actually easier to put the drop ceiling in. It's, the drop ceiling isn't ideal, but if it's, you know, that's what we need here, there's no, no way around it. It does solve the issue of if we should hear little drips on the ceiling, we can pop a few panels, we can actually ladder up and then take care of it. You know, clearly with the sheet rock, you're kinda stuck.
So we won't do anything cosmetically about the ceiling, we'll just?
No, we'll never, we'll never see it and nothing will ever deteriorate, cause it's all tan up there or whatever metal that is. And, uh, it can be inspected from standing in the balcony with, with the light, anytime you want to. And if you see trouble area, you pop a few panels and you can ladder up and see what you think. But it gives a working space and addresses everything in two thousand and nine, without putting on the very expensive additions they were talking about.
So how high, how high up will the ceiling go, the drop ceiling?
The ceiling will be right from the railing of the balcony, right along all the crossbars you see around the windows. So from the interior, we'll have very large windows and from the exterior, the building will look exactly the same. And from the exterior, the building will look exactly the same. The only thing you'll, you'll see a difference is at night now, well, out these windows where the lights are, which is already obstructed by that roof they put up. So it really won't matter at all. There, there's really nobody ever up here at night other than us. So it has no real effect. And then we can even look at making this the entrance again. You know, yeah, I know, I ruined a little bit. But the, other than going forward with this, the only option is all the ones we've already gone through. Short of building a building in the parking lot, which is not, is not going to happen now, I consider.
Not for a few years.
Yeah, yeah. So this is a, a fix for what could be a while, but it's like doing downstairs. It was time to do it, now it's time to just do up here and move on. The only thing before we get, because I am going to change some of these dates. Again, this is kind of Kermit's done, what I hope is next done here, the town garage update. Is just seeing what funding is available as we get final bids on things. So this will be, there's never a good time to do this. It's going to be disruptive whenever we do this. So if we can do it in the winter, that'd be nice. I'm going to wait a few weeks, all these dates in here are tentative. Because I would like to just try and, like I said, if the board can talk to people, I'm trying to talk to people. This is what we're talking about, feedback. We know it's a historical building, but this is not going to change the historic nature of the building. It's going to make it what it has been for thirty, forty years, an office building. And it's one that, that's needed and has been recommended for a solid eight years now in the report. So we'll be back to this in a few weeks if we don't hear anything from anybody with new dates. And we'll see, you know, we'll see the full impact from the garage when we get the bids for that before we go off in any direction. I think that'd be a prudent wait. We've waited forty years, another six weeks, isn't it?
Sure. Okay, very good.
Okay, garage. The, let's see. I heard from, excuse me, MSK today, a little snag on the transfer station. He's just, they want some more paperwork. So it's really not a problem, but it's paperwork. So the approval is going to be delayed probably till mid-October, which it's never good. And they don't really like you to start moving dirt if you don't have the final approval. So that's why earlier I'd mentioned, we might move the actual construction of this, of the new transfer station to the spring. We can do a lot of the, just site prep work, take the trees down and all that during the winter. But the more we put it back, the more we're really getting into winter prep season, and that has to take priority. So we'll just see how quickly this permit rolls along. We have a scheduled DRB meeting for October fourth for MSK to present the site plan to the DRB. That's also procedurally just following along with town ordinances that we have to submit this to them or we choose to. And there's never been any discussion I've ever heard, and this has been applied forward, presented there dozens of times. But this is a new project and they have to see all the documentation and where you're at.
Just clarification there, there's not a town ordinance that requires us to, to submit to the DRB. We, we don't have to submit to the DRB. They cannot deny the town anything that we choose to do for the town's benefit. But we are choosing to submit a full application to the DRB because.
So you don't see it's necessary that we all show up or something like that?
No, no, I intend to be there, but, you know, this is the town following its own rules.
It's kind of like when we did this all year, so we want to follow, you know, and have their input. The other big news today is from Goldstone. We haven't given the waiver on the firewall in the garage, so we don't have to worry about that. Late tonight, about five thirty, I got all the bid packages from Goldstone. So I'm just going to put them all in a Dropbox. And we'll discuss over the next week or so if we need to have a meeting prior to the bid going out to discuss this. We probably should.
This is the bid for?
The whole package, building the building. So.
Is that as big as I suspected it is?
Well, it took five different PDFs to get it through. I haven't opened any of them because it came pretty much just before the meeting. So I haven't read them, but I'll download them and put them all on Dropbox for everybody.
Do we want to get Goldstone in here to walk us through that? Because I imagine we're talking about hundreds of pages of stuff here.
This is the bid that would go to contractors, is that?
Yes. Yeah, and I think that's probably a good idea. If everybody reads it, and if you let me know a date, I can talk to Goldstone, set up a meeting for next week for them to come in if, because I'm sure it's lengthy.
Yeah, I mean, Art and I have been in on the meetings, we know what we've talked about, but.
When you start throwing around more than equivalent, that, that needs some explanation.
Yep. Right, right. And it's, it's going to be a burden, burdensome amount of paperwork for any one of us to try and slog through. So we're going to need guidance. Yeah, let's have them come in.
All right, so look for that for next week, give everybody a chance to read through this. And I'll check with the schedule too, I don't know what else I have on the plate. And I'll see what timing works better for them, I don't know.
Still looking for October first for the bids to actually be available to people?
To be available, go out, that's why, that's why we need to read these and get together with Goldstone. It's a great idea and ask questions so they can modify it. Yeah, because we're still looking to get the bids back in November so we can award it to get early on somebody's construction schedule.
So we're looking at a special meeting for that?
Yeah, yeah, we can't, this is the last meeting for September. So we can't wait till October.
Yeah.
That's about it for the garage. And the next one is the janitorial services bid. We've had services here, I guess, for who knows how long. We have no written contract, we have nothing. So what I, what I took here, and I did not change, it is not thirty-five pages long. But I did, I took.
Thirty-five or thirty-one?
Yeah. Well, that's because I took out all the state language. This is basically a, a office cleaning contract from the state of Vermont. Because it identifies a lot of things that we need done in the building and on a schedule. And what we need, what we want is to have a document that I'm going to circulate to a bunch of local people and we'll advertise it. And this is what we expect done so that when we're in the contract at some point, and I have cobwebs all over the place and unclean things that can go on page three, it says you're supposed to do that. I mean, right now, we have nothing.
Currently, what happens?
Yeah, we have, we have nothing. I mean, it's, you can't, you know, you need something. And this has simple things like this floor has not been done in who knows how long. And it has that in here. It has taking care of the tile floors we just bought a couple of years ago downstairs. It has carpet cleaning, which I'm hesitant to wonder when the last time that was done here. And if these things are maintained, it's like anything, if you're maintaining your home, you're maintaining your building, everything lasts longer. So this just formalizes, I know it's a little, seems a little bit much for janitorial services. But when whoever gets this will know that twice a year they're supposed to do this. Weekly, this is supposed to be done, and if it's not done, we can go, it's right here. And this one from the state is actually pretty good because it has performance standards. This is exactly what we mean by this. And, you know, it's clear, the expectations are clear on both ends, and it has to be lived up to. And I'll change all the numbers so that they don't think there's thirty other pages to this.
Well, I'm for, you know, saying what we want cleaned, but I don't know that I, I want to require that, you know, the local cleaning service, you know, wants, has to have a lawyer to, to read through this stuff. There's a statement of rights and method of award and all this stuff. Do we really need all of this in a, in a janitorial contract? I mean, there's thirty-five pages here that in.
There are thirty-five pages.
Yeah.
No, there's, there's these pages. What did you do?
This is what's on the Dropbox.
Well, then you got the wrong one. Well, then I'll put this back in because there's only five pages.
Okay.
Because I dropped all that nonsense that, not, all the required stuff that the state has in it, no.
Climate change considerations, state tourism.
That's all, no, 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 no. I'm sorry. You know what, I must have hit the wrong one when I entered it in the Dropbox.
Okay, okay.
Because the actual one is consistent, one, two, three, four, five, six pages. Six pages that really just talks about this is what you're supposed to do when you clean the bathroom. This is what you're supposed to do when you clean the house. I'll recirculate this, you can change it, this is another one, I'll just change the date. I'll recirculate this for the next meeting and we'll do it then. Okay, my apologies, yes, I could see why you wouldn't want that in there, yeah, that's.
Did I miss a name or I didn't see anything in here that they had to have insurance?
Uh, they do have to have insurance.
Yeah, I didn't see it on that paper.
Yeah. Uh, they do have to have insurance like everybody else.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. Yeah, so, well, let me get you the right copy.
Okay.
My regrets on that. No, we don't, we don't have a thirty-five page.
Okay, good.
Which almost leads us into the next thing, talking about insurance. But tree work. Tree work, as you know, Green Mountains people are going to start taking down trees in October for us. And that leaves us with a considerable number of our own trees to take down. We have almost completely exhausted the fiscal eighteen tree budget already of our whopping five thousand dollars.
One tree can do that.
Yeah, yeah. And we had one walkover of a tree and it took nearly two thousand dollars to get rid of it. And the rest is pretty much gone already. So I was going to put out a bid and we were going to look at excess monies from highways from last year and the previous year, which we can just use because it can never, it always has to stay in highways. I was going to bring that up tonight and I changed my mind on that because the auditors we just here, we're just doing everything. So when the audit report is done and we have the final figures on, on what's available from excess highways, we'll pick this up again and we'll go for a contract and start taking down more of our own trees. But we will have thirty trees worked on in October, November by Asplund, who's the contractor for Green Mountain. So we're making progress and we know there's a lot more out there. But we'll wait till the audit paperwork is back so we know exactly how much it was. I was a little surprised myself when I went to the budget and saw that we've already exhausted the trees. Next year, trees are going to have to go up. I mean, five thousand really is, is nothing. And it's something that clearly from the report from our tree warden, we've gotten behind on. So that's, we're going to wait with that. Okay, the contract with, the listers, as you know, did not renew the contract with our past assessor. On recommendations of the state, they've made an offer to Barb Sleckinger from Palinol to take it up, who's very experienced and then licensed appraiser in the state of Vermont. The idea was to have her as a contractor. However, unlike mountain air assessors and land and associates, she does not have a strict company. She has an excellent background, but she doesn't have a company. So we're going to switch that to make her an employee of the listers, which is actually has some benefits to it because we can make more control over the time she's here of what actual tasks they are. There's a whole checklist of what's a contractor or what's an employee so that you don't call them contractors to avoid taxes. And as it turns out, her not being incorporated like the other people were, kind of leads us into a gray area of what we're doing. So I think the easiest and safest position for the town is just to hire a straight out as an appraiser working for the, for the listers. She doesn't care, that's fine with her too, because she doesn't have the strict business structure that the other contractors did. And certainly she doesn't want to go out and get her insurance. Because that's one of the things I mentioned, if you, we hire you as a contractor, you have to have insurance like everybody else. Because if you go to a house and drive your car into someone's parked car or something, you know, you have to have insurance to cover that when you're working for the town. So we'll just make her an employee. It's, it's, well, there's limits to what I can discuss as an employee in public, but the agreement is adding pages.
How does that work? Because a lister is elected by the people?
Yes.
So we don't have any control over a lister? So we really, and is the town or the listers hiring this person? So who has control over this person?
This is, is an interesting thing too.
Okay.
The listers can hire staff, but we're actually hiring the person. And all the personnel stuff goes through.
Through us.
Through us, yeah. We can provide direction, of course, because we control the purse strings too. But we're talking about an independently elected, it's like Gina down in the clerk's office.
Yes.
The clerk can appoint whoever they want. It's not like that the listers came to me right away and all this, and we talked with Barb. They kind of hired her before we got this far, which kind of, you know, the wagon in front of the horse. But it is a good choice and she's already worked out very well with everybody. And she's recommended by the state.
Okay.
And there's just so few people out there for this.
Just, just kind of curious, sounds.
Yeah. No, and if you remember, we discussed before Jim's illness and, and Jim passing away, we talked about bringing to the voters the idea of eliminating the listers and having a paid person working as the town's lister. And the current listers have not changed their opinion on that, that's the direction they would like to go.
Really?
And we have their backing, and I think that's something to discuss for bringing up again at election next year. We were, we were talking about that two years ago, and when Jim became so ill, it just turned into we need somebody immediately and there's no chance of moving to that. But things have stabilized and there's a potential for moving towards that again in the spring and see if the voters will go for that. It's not like you get an overwhelming number of people who want to become a lister for ten, ten fifty to this. No way, so I had to raise it. So.
Yeah, things have changed from the good old days when, when the people.
And it's complicated.
We're doing that all over the place. I mean, you know, we don't have Joe Hermans coming in the door to run the water system.
And it's complicated business too now, the listing. There's a lot of things going on.
So is that, the listers are on board with that? That's something that we just need to put to the voters?
Yeah.
So are we, are we ready to put that to the voters this next March? That we want to eliminate the listers?
Well, we, we can continue the discussion when we get closer into the budget and all that.
Yeah.
I'm sure everything works out, but I know that's, we discussed that.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah. Because they would, the way we had it before was they would, the listeners would stay to assist in an unelected position until everything was squared away. And then it would just be an employee doing it. And many, you know, many times I have all these positions, they're employees, you can do it with it. No, you can't do it with it. You have a financial officer who basically runs all the finances and an elected treasurer who kind of signs off on things. It's kind of like the way it's the school boards run, we're having the town treasurers, the school treasurer, for all the works being done over in the VR issue, not VR issue, SV issue.
So, so when we have that the listers are available Monday and Wednesday or something like that, from nine to twelve or something like that, they're, when they're here, they're being paid the ten fifty an hour.
Yes, they're being paid the ten fifty an hour.
So that money could be.
Yeah.
We could look at that money and say, just to go towards a permanent person by the time.
And you could also look at, you know, more hours, more accessible hours. You know, there's a lot of things you can look at. There's, there's a lot of ways to look at this. But I know, like I said before, before Jim got ill, this is where we were headed. And I know that we're still ready to go.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't think you would look towards saving any money by getting rid of the listers. Because in fact, it'd probably cost us money because we're going to have to have the appraiser here during those times.
I agree, but there is a part of money that, that we're paying out for listers already. That, that's my point. There's already money we're expending for listers, not only, not only for the professionals, but for the town people. That's all I have.
So no action on that new appraiser, that's, the listers have made that hire?
Yeah, yeah, the, the listers decide that's who, who they want, which I endorse completely. It's now, we're just not going to have a contractor, of course, you've not really set up for that. And we have to protect ourselves from being, because the IRS, the state can all get involved in this, saying. saying she's not really a contractor, she's an employee, there's a whole list of things to look at. And in reviewing it, I just decided that she's really riding a fine line here. If she was incorporated or something, it'd be an easier thing if she was insured, but it'll be easier to have her as an employee all the way around.
How does that involve, that we took out health insurance, how does that...
She's a part-time employee, she's not gonna come anywhere.
Retired, okay.
Yeah, she's not gonna come anywhere near the insurance threshold.
Okay.
Especially at heart rate. But yes, it wouldn't come, it wouldn't affect any of that at all. No pension, no nothing.
Okay.
Just part-time job.
Okay, is there any other business? All right, reviewing action items. Going back a little ways to some that we've been carrying along for a while. We have a review of the water department rules and regulations that's been postponed. I, I understand at the meeting that I missed, it was postponed again and we're planning to take that up at the next water board meeting. Do we have a schedule for that meeting?
I believe it would be beginning in November.
Okay. We were also, this is from a water board back in April also, a discussion about how to handle the new assistant water superintendent salary and that's been worked out, the budget was approved on eight-twenty-one. And Dave Worthington from the public works department is the water board assistant. We, we were wondering what happened to our signs over on White Creek and around that area and Bank Street that they promised us new signs the state had, Dave is gonna check in on that.
Yeah, I did not get that, that was all supposed to be free. Yeah, it's all free, yeah.
Yeah, it's great, it's just, there are signs laying on the ground over there that you're not doing anything about because they said they were gonna fix them and it's gonna be a long time, maybe we need to prop them up at least. We decided we needed help from Green Mountain Power in trimming the trees around the radar speed feedback sign on the south end of town because it keeps going out, because it's not getting enough sun apparently. Trimming the trees is scheduled for October with the other tree work that they're doing around town. And you were saying you were also gonna get a quote to look at maybe just wiring that down so we don't have to worry about the trees so much.
Yeah, because the other one runs fine.
But I mean, we still got a problem with the trees there, just keeping them trimmed back enough so you can see the sign. So I, I hope if we keep them trimmed back enough that you can see the sign, that'll make the, the solar charger work too, but we'll see. Let's see, we gave Dave the go-ahead to hire two temps back in July, he's done that. In our, we also discussed in July, making a, a full-time hire at some point, have we, where are we with that process?
Well, we, we hired a full-time, we hired Kyle Legacy, starting July eleventh, full-time. And we're looking at the sixth, which we're letting that play out. We have an agreement till mid-November with Eric Santhum, who's working the parks right now. So we kind of tabled a decision on the sixth for a little bit. But we should probably get to that next meeting, because if we are not going to go up to six, we need to find someone who's gonna file.
Right.
So...
And for those that may not have heard the discussion before, the decision to go to a six was largely driven by the fact that a lot of what the crew does work, requires people working in pairs and that, that fifth man is just not as easy to use as we had hoped.
Yeah, and, and when we rolled out where all our part-timers left and we wanted to create the DPW, the idea was that would function with six. We barely could get that off the ground because we lost so many people over the summer. We barely had two people working on some days. So I think still six is, is the optimum, considering it isn't just what the highway department was, it's now the water department, it's now the parks.
Right.
You know, so six is not an extraordinary number of people.
Let's see, we had an action in August to schedule Bennington Rescue, we did that tonight. Ken noticed an issue about calling before we dig that came up as an insurance claim, where we didn't call before we dig. And we checked into that, yes, we do call before we dig, it's just that one time that got overlooked. And so that was why we, we had that insurance claim. And I think it was also Ken was asking if the community appropriations nonprofits have to ask to get their money? And the answer is no. Once they're on the ballot and they're approved, they get their money and it's normally mailed out in December after we get most of the tax money in. So they'll be getting their, their FY-eighteen money in December, yeah.
And they're asking for FY-nineteen.
Right, right, yeah. I got confused last, Dave and I were swapping emails today and somebody was saying, you know, I applied for FY-eighteen, what, is there a problem? This is some of the community appropriations people I've been communicating with. And Dave had to straighten me out, yes, it's twenty-seventeen, but we're operating in FY-eighteen and planning for FY-nineteen. You oughta know that by now. Okay, tonight, Dave and I will look at this business of the nine-one-one address up on Chesbury Hollow, at the Moffett, Moffett property. Oh, yes, we'll put a notice up on the, on the website reminding people that tax notices are out and if they haven't gotten theirs, that's not gonna be an excuse. It's their responsibility to pay their taxes whether or not we have their correct mailing address. We'll, I'll go through the website and find out where there's confusion about PO box versus street address and make sure that people realize to get to a piece of mail too, you have to put the PO box on it. And I assume you can put both and get it here?
Yeah, actually, that's what confused me when I first came here and it's like, why do we have two addresses on here? You see, the physical address, it's all that goes on with the post office box, but it's the PO box that you have to have on for it to get here legally, you don't need sixty-one Buck Hill Road. That's just a courtesy so people know the physical location they wanna come visit. But it's PO box four oh nine, has to be on there for town business, for taxes, it's PO box one seventy-eight. So that, Bob pointed it out, you know, sometimes new eyes on things, because it's really on the top of the webpage, it has the street address, but on the bottom where it says how to contact us, it has the PO box, but a lot of people will just see the top and just write sixty-one Buck Hill. I've looked at that page ten thousand times and it starts to go by.
Yeah, I know I filled out forms and put our address as sixty-one Buck Hill and left off the PO box. Dave, you said, you offered to look into how the split between Arlington and Bennington rescues are... There what?
Yeah, I'll see how it started, I have no idea.
See what that's about. We're gonna have a special meeting next week to get Goldstone in here to explain those bid documents for us. And you're gonna...
Take out twenty-seven pages.
Take out twenty-seven pages of the janitorial contract, yeah.
Yes, I accidentally sent you guys the wrong...
So the janitorial service will not have to take climate change...
Well, I didn't understand when you asked me this, I was like, what, what legally would clean the windows?
Good, good, we are on the same page after all.
So that's one mistake there.
Yeah, one, that's it, that's...
That's all you get.
Samoan.
Yeah, actually, really, when you look at the state contract, you're like, whoa. But the, the part about the actual work made it pretty clear what was expected, so, yeah, we don't need to be compliant with whatever act that was. And they even specify what kind of cleaner you have to use.
Yeah, wow.
Something that cleanses as well as...
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Tony, second by Art, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at eight-fifty.